Hello and welcome to the special session of the CAR 2021 Virtual Conference entitled, Understanding COVID-19 Immunity: Recent Advances at the Interface with HIV and HCV Biomedical and Clinical Research. My name is Mark Brockman. I'm a professor at Simon Fraser University. On behalf of myself and my co-chair, Dr. Lyle McKinnon from the University of Manitoba, I have the privilege of introducing the session and our three speakers today. Our session today will run about 75 minutes until 5:30 PM Eastern Time. Each speaker will have 20 to 30 minutes to present their work, following which we'll have a live question and answer discussion period. So I encourage you to please make note of any questions or comments, and we'll have a chance to get to them at the end of today's proceedings. Over the past year, we've learned a lot about the immune response to SARS-CoV-2 infection and some of the immune-mediated mechanisms that lead to COVID-19 disease. Our three speakers today will touch on various aspects of this immune response, detailing some aspects of the innate as well as the adaptive immune response to SARS-CoV-2 infection. Our first speaker will be Dr. Jordan Feld, an Associate Professor of Medicine at the University of Toronto, and he will speak to us about the potential use of interferon lambda therapy for COVID-19 disease. Dr. Feld has extensive clinical and laboratory expertise in the area of liver disease with particular interest on viral hepatitis. And over the past year, in the context of COVID-19, he has led clinical research studies to test the effectiveness of interferon lambda therapy, which were reported earlier this year in Lancet Respiratory Medicine. Our second speaker today will be Dr. Michael Betts, a professor at the University of Pennsylvania. Dr. Betts has extensive expeditions in cellular immunology and has performed really seminal work to understand T-cell responses to a number of viral infections. Over the past 16 months, Dr. Betts has applied his expertise to study immune responses to COVID-19 with recent manuscripts published in Science and Science Immunology Journals. And today, he will speak to us about his lab's transition into COVID-19 research, focusing on efforts to map immune cell function and dysfunction that can help us understand mechanisms of COVID-19 disease, as well as correlates of immune protection following infection and vaccination. Our final speaker today is Dr. Galit Alter. Dr. Alter is a professor of medicine at Harvard Medical School. She has broad expertise in viral immunology, and in particular, she has developed system serology approaches to identify and define correlates of natural and vaccine elicited immunity against a variety of infectious diseases. Over the past year or so, Dr. Alter has applied her expertise to study antibody responses to SARS-CoV-2 following infection, as well as in a number of different vaccination models, with recent manuscripts published in the journals Science, Cell, and Immunity, among others. Today, Dr. Alter will speak about her efforts to apply the system serology methods to identify mechanisms of antibody-mediated protection against COVID-19 disease. We hope that by the end of today's session, you will gain a better appreciation into what we understand and now know about SARS-CoV-2 infection and COVID-19 disease, but also begin to appreciate how the underlying research, past studies on HCV and HIV have really set a solid foundation for moving rapidly into the area of SARS-CoV-2, understanding SARS-CoV-2 immunity. So I look forward to hearing from our three speakers into the discussion that follows. Thank you.
My name is Jordan Feld, and I'm a hepatologist at the University of Toronto. And I'd like to thank the organizers for giving me the opportunity to present some of our data on the use of peg interferon lambda for the treatment of COVID-19. Here are my disclosures, and I should highlight that as a hepatologist, you might wonder why a liver doctor is talking about a viral infection, but I do most of my work in the viral hepatitis space, hepatitis B and C, and that's where these disclosures are related to. So today, I'm going to be talking about interferon lambda, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the idea of interferons, but sometimes people lump all the interferons together. And I want to highlight that there are some distinguishing features between the different types of interferon. The usual, sort of usual type of interferon we think of are the type 1 interferons, interferon alpha and beta. And today, I'm going to be talking about interferon lambda. And the way interferons work is that they bind to their receptor, and then they activate this pathway, typically going through the Jakstat pathway, to turn on a whole bunch of genes, which are collectively known as interferon stimulated genes. And the big difference between type 1 interferons and type 3 interferons is that they use a different receptor. So they actually induce almost the same pathway, the same types of interferon stimulated genes. And the nice thing about inducing ISGs is that they have a very pleiotropic effect. So they're attacking the virus on multiple different fronts. And because of that, we really haven't seen true resistance to interferon with either SARS-CoV-2 or really with most viruses because of this multi-pronged detached attack. But the difference of having a type 3 versus a type 1 interferon is because this receptor is different, what we see is the type 1 interferon receptor is expressed on every cell in the body. And that's one of the reasons why although it's a potent antiviral, it actually has a lot of off-target effects because it's activating this antiviral response everywhere in the body as soon as it's turned on. Whereas interferon lambda is more restricted in the receptor distribution, which is primarily on epithelial cells, mainly in the lung, the liver, intestine, and on a certain subset of specialized immune cells. But most immune cells actually don't express the interferon lambda receptor, and as a result, it's much less inflammatory. So if you want to classify them broadly, type 1 interferons are more systemic, whereas type 3 interferons are a more focused epithelial response. And when we look at lambda interferon in viral lung infections, this is one of the studies which really led us to think about using lambda for SARS-CoV-2 infection. And this was a study looking at influenza. And the mice were treated either with interferon alpha or lambda, and you can see if they were given either interferon prior to infection, it really prevented infection. So that's another important point about interferons, is they kind of put up the protection by inducing ISGs and actually are very good prophylactic therapies for preventing infection. But what you see is when they were given post-infection, so this is as treatment, what you see is that both alpha and lambda led to a suppression in viral load, but really there was quite a difference in the outcome. So you can see that the alpha-treated mice actually did worse than the vector-control treated mice, whereas the lambda mice had a survival benefit. And the reason these alpha mice did worse is because although it suppressed the virus similarly, what we saw was that it also induced this inflammatory response. And so there was this sort of cytokine storm syndrome in the mice, which of course has been described in COVID-19. Now, when we go to this novel coronavirus, we see that interferon lambda in vitro and mouse studies is able to suppress the virus. You can see a dose-response curve in cells or in mice that are infected with SARS-CoV-2 that you can see when they're treated prophylactically or therapeutically with lambda, you get a nice antiviral response. And the reason this might be relevant is that we know that this virus, as many viruses, is good at impairing the interferon response, this very important innate antiviral immune response. You can see that when you look at either the original SARS virus or SARS-CoV-2, you can see that this virus is very good at blocking the induction of type 1 interferons, alpha and beta, type 2 interferon, interferon gamma, or all of the type 3 interferons. And you can see that normally you would see a very strong induction of these interferons in response to a viral infection, but you see particularly SARS-CoV-2 is really good at blocking lambda. So this raises the question of whether actually giving lambda would help. And we see that there are now data showing that people that have an impaired response, type 1 interferon response, so they don't produce interferon alpha, or they have things that block interferon alpha, so this landmark paper in Science that showed that interferon alpha antibodies, when they're present, are associated with very severe COVID-19. And similarly, in patients that have genetic problems with induction of interferon, also have a much higher risk of severe disease. So this really sort of sets the case for lambda, where interferon lambda is important for respiratory viral infections. We see low induction of interferon is associated with worse outcomes in COVID-19, that induction and activity of type 1 interferon, so alpha and beta, is impaired by SARS-CoV-2. And I showed you that induction of type 3 interferon or lambda is also impaired by this virus, but treatment with lambda inhibits the virus, and it's active in the lungs, gut, and liver, which are all probable sites of replication for this virus. Importantly, it's less inflammatory than type 1 interferon, so perhaps a lower risk of stimulating the cytokine storm syndrome. And very importantly, that none of the interferons are really affected by viral sequence, so they're active against these variants of concern. And the nice other thing about lambda is there's a pegalated long-acting form, so you can see these are data where it's been used to treat viral hepatitis, and you can see because of this limited receptor distribution, fewer systemic side effects comparing lambda to alpha, and no cytopenias that you see with alpha compared to lambda. So a very effective antiviral with fewer side effects. So this led us to do this trial, a phase 2 randomized double-blind placebo-controlled trial of interferon lambda in outpatients with COVID-19. So we focused initially on outpatients because we really wanted to first see if there was a beneficial effect, but also because antivirals typically are most effective when given very early in the course of an infection. So we enrolled patients that were within seven days of symptom onset and were well enough to go home to isolation, and they were randomized to a single dose of peg interferon of lambda as a subcutaneous injection or a saline placebo. And you can see that we saw them on day 3, 7, and 14, and we had touchpoints with them by videoconferencing, as well as collecting samples on these other time points. Now importantly, we prespecified the analysis that we would control for baseline viral load, because our primary endpoint was the time to viral, or the proportion of viral clearance by day 7, and we figured that that would also be impacted by the initial viral load. We included patients who were adults within seven days of symptom onset, or their first swab if they were asymptomatic and well enough for home isolation, and we excluded patients that we thought might have a contraindication to an interferon therapy, so those that were immunosuppressed, pregnant, or a number of conditions that might be worsened by interferon lambda. If we look at the population enrolled, so 30 patients in each arm, and you can see a pretty even sex and age distribution, these were, for the most part, relatively young and healthy patients. About half were Caucasian, but a fairly good multicultural population that we would see in Toronto, most without comorbidities. And you can see, we also looked at, for those that are familiar with it, the interferon lambda 4 genotype, which is associated with interferon alpha response in hep C. Now, if we look at their symptom duration, about four to five days in both groups, and you can see that a proportion were asymptomatic in both groups. When we look at the viral characteristics, we did use a quantitative viral load that was to really standardize the comparison, so rather than just using CT or cycle threshold values. And you can see there actually was a difference between the two groups, so a little higher in the lambda group at baseline. And there were a proportion of people who all had a confirmed positive test at screening, but by the time they got their dose a few days later, had already become undetectable. And you can see that was not a trivial percentage in both groups and quite relevant. But that being said, the majority of patients, so over 50%, still had a high viral load above 10 to the sixth copies, and that was true in both groups. And interestingly, a proportion of patients, and it turned out to be all in the placebo group, already had IgG antibodies on day zero, and four out of five of these were patients that had undetectable virus at treatment. So this is showing the high-level results in terms of the viral decline. So you can see that they start at different virus levels, but if you control this and start them both at zero and look at the viral decline over time, you can see that the lambda group has a greater viral decline over time. And this is actually quite a significant difference. You can see that by day 7, there's about a 2.5 log difference in viral decline with lambda compared to placebo, and I'll show this to you in comparison to other therapies a little later. Now, when we look at the overall primary endpoint, you can see that 80% in the lambda group were negative at day 7 compared to 63% in the placebo group. This on its own was not quite statistically significant, but as we anticipated, the baseline viral load was strongly associated with the probability of clearance by day 7. You can see this strong p-value here. And so as we prespecified to control for baseline viral, you can see, once we do that, the effect of lambda is quite pronounced with an odds ratio of 4 for clearance. And really, what we see is that the effect of the antiviral was greatest in patients as the viral load went up. So on the x-axis, you see the baseline viral load with increasing viral load, and here's the probability of clearance by day 7. And you can see that at very low viral loads, whether you give lambda or not is irrelevant, patients are going to clear by day 7. But as the viral load increases, the benefit of lambda, so looking at the odds ratio between lambda and placebo, increases with every incremental rise in SARS-CoV-2 viral level. And so to look at this a little more carefully, we also stratified patients by those above and below six log copies of virus or million. And the reason we did this is this is probably around the infectious threshold. So people below six log copies, probably most of them are not infectious. And what you see here is the benefit of lambda really starts to become more clear here. So now you see that of these patients with a high viral load, almost 80% are clear in the lambda group, whereas only 38% in the placebo group. And if we break this down a little bit, even the few who remained positive in the lambda group, all had very low and clearly not infectious virus, whereas of those who were still positive in the placebo group, not only were they positive, but they were still positive at a very high level of virus. Now, you can see when we looked in the low baseline viral load, people below 10 to the sixth, you can see that both groups cleared very quickly, a high proportion were negative by day 7. And if we break this down a little bit more and look at the viral decline, and this is important because now you see that baseline difference between the two groups has disappeared. And if we look at the viral decline, we see very similar overall response compared than that I showed you before, with by day 7, a highly statistically significant two-log difference with lambda compared to placebo. So a clear antiviral effect. And this translated to the time to clearance in those with a high viral load being significantly shorter in the lambda group at seven days compared to 10 days in the placebo group. However, when you look at those with a low viral load, and this is going to be important when I show you some other data in this area, you can see that in this lambda, in the low viral load group, you do still see an antiviral effect of lambda. You can see they start higher and come down to around where the placebo group is, but both groups clear very quickly, and none of these differences are statistically significant. Now, what about safety? Well, it's sometimes hard to compare the side effects of interferon lambda to symptoms of mild to moderate COVID-19. So we sort of categorize the symptoms, things that we thought were likely one, so respiratory symptoms, more likely the infection, whereas things like skin and reaction, injection site reactions would be more likely the drug, and some could be both, things like fever, which are a bit hard to distinguish. And so when we look at these categories, and I'm just showing you this in a high-level thing, where you see no symptoms, mild in blue, moderate in darker blue, or severe in orange, you can see that both groups had symptom improvement over time, and there was a slight acceleration of improvement in respiratory symptoms with interferon lambda. But the truth is, overall, there was a relatively similar rate of improvement in both groups. Now, when we look at adverse events, though, these were categorized as anything that didn't fall into one of our specifically asked-about symptoms. And you can see there were actually very few of these, just two in the lambda group and one in the placebo group. There was a single SAE in each group, and these were hospitalizations, one in the placebo group who was admitted on day 1 for worsening COVID-19, and one in the lambda group who was admitted on day 14 for shortness of breath and turned out to have a pulmonary embolism. When we looked at lab adverse events, really the only thing that stood out was we did see transient ALT elevations in the lambda group more frequently than in placebo group. In about 25% of patients, they all resolved spontaneously, and none were associated with bilirubin or other signs of liver synthetic dysfunction. So to summarize, treatment accelerated viral decline, and after controlling for baseline viral load, treatment was associated with clearance by day 7, which was the primary endpoint. The effect was most pronounced in those with a higher viral load, and particularly in those above six log copies, we saw quite a significant difference by day 7. Treatment was well tolerated with mild reversible transaminase elevations, but a similar side effect profile to placebo. And to be fair, it is hard to separate mild AEs from COVID symptoms. So let's look at some other data in this area. And another trial, a very similar design, just was published very recently, a study out of Stanford, where they also looked at outpatients with mild to moderate COVID and randomized them to peg interferon lambda or placebo. And interestingly, they saw actually no difference. So they saw no effect on the time to viral clearance with treatment. And at first, you might say, well, that's surprising, because that's really, doesn't agree with our results. But I want to show you that actually it's quite consistent with what we found, because one of the differences, it's a subtle but important difference in their trial design, is they actually had no limit on the time of entry. We limited it to within seven days of symptom onset. They actually had some patients who were out to 28 days or longer of symptom onset, so they had prolonged viral shedding, but were very late in their course of disease. And actually, reflecting that, they had no patients in their trial with really a high viral load. And this is reflected by the median viral load in our study was about a CT value of 23 compared to 30 in their study, or converted into quantitative levels, about 4.4 logs compared to 6.7 logs. So that's, just to put it in context, that's over a hundred-fold difference in the level of virus that we start with. And really, what we saw is exactly the same thing. In patients with a very low viral load, treatment is unnecessary and probably not particularly effective. These patients are going to clear on their own anyway. They saw a very good safety profile, the same transaminase elevations that we saw, and they were really unable to assess patients with a high viral load because they didn't really enroll any. And that was probably a bit of a design error with the study, but I think overall, the data are quite consistent with what we found. Now, when we look at interferon in other studies, there have been a few in hospitalized patients, this first study that was published in the Lancet, that showed that interferon beta, when given with lepinavir, ritonavir, and ribavirin, was more effective than when lepinavir and ritonavir was given alone in a small phase 2 trial, so faster clearance of virus. And a study of looking at inhaled interferon beta in hospitalized patients with moderate COVID-19, and they showed clinical improvement was greater with treatment on an ordinal scale. It was pretty well tolerated, and they have a phase 3 study ongoing. Interestingly, they didn't actually look at the virus levels in these patients. And there's also now a study going on, or sorry, the interferon beta given as a subQ injection in hospitalized patients, so this is again a type 1 interferon, in the large WHO solidarity trial. And here, they didn't see any benefit, it was stopped early for futility, and there was at least a little bit of concern about harm. And this may relate to it being given too late, so by the time someone's in hospital, the benefit of antiviral therapy may be less significant, but also the possibility that giving a type 1 interferon, particularly beta, may be more inflammatory than giving a type 3 interferon. And I think this inhaled version of it might get around that a little bit, but when you give it systemically, as these subQ doses did, you might run into at least some concern about toxicity, particularly in patients with more significant disease. Now, what about other approaches in the outpatient setting, where you're probably all familiar with the monoclonal antibodies? And here is the data with bamenivimab. And what you see is that actually this monoclonal has a pretty modest antiviral effect. So when you look at the mean change in baseline viral load to day 11, you can see that overall, compared to placebo, just about a half log difference. And when you look at day 7, so making it more comparable to our data, you see the pooled response here is 0.3 logs, and that contrasts with the much more profound antiviral effect that we saw with interferon lambda of about a 2.4 log difference. So really, quite a striking difference in antiviral efficacy. But importantly, when you look at what the effect of giving the monoclonal was, you did see this improvement in symptom score. And actually, importantly, in patients that had a high viral load on day 7, you can see that they were more likely to get hospitalized. So despite this relatively modest effect in viral levels, using the monoclonal did lead to more rapid symptom improvement and reduced hospitalization. So that might mean translating, if we use a drug with a more potent antiviral effect, that we might expect a similar or more potent symptomatic or clinical benefit. So to sort of summarize the data and think about next steps, I think rapid viral clearance in the outpatient setting may prevent deterioration in the individual, reduce transmission possibly, and hopefully actually shorten duration required for self-isolation. But here, it's really key that early therapies required, and I think that's why the Stanford Lambda trial really didn't show the same effect, is that they really just gave the treatment too late. The follow-up studies that we're doing with interferon lambda, we're now doing, hopefully starting an ambulatory study in a enriched population for clinical endpoints with older age comorbidities and variants of concern. This is key, antivirals need to be given early, and this will hopefully be, we'll hopefully be getting the study underway very soon. And we have an ongoing trial in a hospitalized cohort. This is worth studying, but it might be too late. I think it's safer than the type 1 interferons, but I don't know any, this is still a blinded study. If anyone's interested in joining, we are looking for other Canadian sites to try to get this finished as quickly as possible. And we have a number of laboratory studies ongoing. And I would just like to acknowledge a huge number of collaborators, particularly, we highlight Chris Kandel, one of our infectious disease doctors in Toronto, who's helped me a great deal with this study, and me, Beyond the, a nurse practitioner and virology PhD, who's also worked on this, as well as the teams all across the city to help us recruit this study, and our funder, CHR, and the U of T and the Ontario Together Granting Agency. Thank you very much for your attention.
My name is Michael Betts, and it's a pleasure to present to you today our studies in my laboratory. Through the past year, I've titled my talk "Navigating the High Seas of the COVID Pandemic in an HIV Immunology Lab." I'm from the University of Pennsylvania. All of my affiliations, or at least some of my affiliations, are shown at the bottom. So my lab studies traditionally studies HIV, and we're very interested in trying to understand what type of CDAT cell responses control HIV replication. And we focused on understanding what happens in individuals that are called long-term non-progressors or HIV controllers. And there's a large body of literature out there that indicates that CDAT cells in these individuals are quite adept at cytotoxicity and killing infected targets. And these controllers maintain CDAT cell responses that have a greater ability to express the cytoletic components, including perforin and granzyme B. And in HIV, sorry, in SIV studies, looking in vaccinated mekax or other situations, just the presence of CDAT cells in the animals, that cytoletic activity of the CD8s seems to provide stronger SIV protection from SIV infection. And so based upon all this, there's a hypothesis that CD8's positive CTL function is a key component of HIV control. But in my laboratory, we go by the hypothesis that this is what's happening in blood, and that's not the site of viral replication. And in fact, viral replication occurs primarily in tissues. And as shown by Jake Estes in this 2017 Nature Medicine paper, only about 0.2% of viral RNA-positive cells are in blood. And yet, typically, in an HIV immunology lab, we're only studying CDAT cell responses in blood, but we don't really understand what's happening outside of the blood. So that's what my lab has been working on for a long period of time now. And what we're trying to understand is, is our peripheral blood HIV-specific CDAT cells involved in control of HIV in tissues? And so we've developed this model based on a lot of literature and studies in our own lab, where if we look at the blood, shown here in red, and we look at the types of CDAT cells that are in the blood, we have cytotoxic T-cells, which we typically call CTL, and then we have the rest of the CDAT cells, which are actually not CTL. And so these two populations differ quite substantially, and the CTL will express the componentry of cytotoxicity, including perforin and granzyme B, and have these other characteristics. Whereas the CD8s that are in the blood have different functions, and different functions of those cells associate with control of HIV, including polyfunctionality, the frequency, the specificity, the proliferation, the phenotype. But again, this is really only what we know of in blood. And when we start to look in tissues, we start to see that things are different. And CTL, as we consider them in the blood with the characteristics that I've just introduced, were shown by Barbara Shacklet's lab in two different papers, in JI mucosal immunology, to basically not be present in tissues, and this is looking in gut mucosal tissue. Whereas instead, they found what was clear evidence of a resident memory phenotype of these CD8s that appear to be non-cytolytic in nature. In my laboratory, we've been spending time looking in lymph nodes, which is the other primary tissue site of HIV replication. And we've published a number of different papers now showing that peripheral blood CTL are not found typically in lymph nodes. And we've also found evidence of a resident memory signature, much similar to what Barbara Shacklet found in the mucosal tissues. But this doesn't address whether the blood CDAT cells, either the CTL or the CD8, as I've designated them here, are traveling through the system. So are they coming through the tissues, through the lymph node, and showing up in the lymph as a way of moving around the body? And so therefore, they could be present in the tissues but are transiently found there. So in order to address this question, we initiated a collaboration with two radiologists at PanMax at Ken and Yovdori, who were cannulating the thoracic duct of people. And they would do so by injecting contrast into the lymph nodes, and the inguinal lymph nodes, and then using an open C-arm scanner, were able to image the contrast dies. You can see here in the middle picture, the dense gray line going, very narrow line going up along the spine with a plume of contrast coming out from a leak. Basically, they would insert a catheter into this thoracic duct, and we got them to remove lymph, which you can see here in the bottom picture, of lymph fluid in the top two tubes and blood from that same person in the bottom tube. And so we embarked upon a large amount of studies trying to understand the CDAT cells that are found in lymph. And here in this figure, TDL refers to the lymph cells, and blood refers and blood refers to the CDAT cells in the blood, obviously. Here's just a basic standard memory phenotyping of the two comparatively. And what you can see quite readily is that the populations of CDAT cells are quite different in the lymph. The memory phenotypes are different and there's many more terminally differentiated CD45 RA positive CCR seven negative cells in, in, in the blood, whereas in the TDL, there's not so many. And we went on to show that there are some dramatic differences between the cells, CDAT cells in the lymph and the CDAT cells in the blood. Not going to belabor all of these details right now. The key answer to, to, to the question of whether the cytotoxic CDAT cells were found in the blood is readily apparent from this, this basic flow cytometry, where we look at perforin and granzyme B expression by CDAT cells in the blood, either on the, on the top flow plot or TDL on the bottom flow plot. And you see a general absence of perforin and granzyme B in the lymph CDAT cells, implying that, that the blood CDAT cells expressing these markers are not traveling through the system. So, so this is what we've been studying now for the last several years. We submitted the paper in October, December of 2019. The manuscript reviews came back in 2020, but then COVID happened. And I will let you read the rest of the story about our HIV work in Cell that was published in December 2020, where we actually come to a relatively strong conclusion that tissue emigrating HIV specific CDAT cells are not cytoletic, implying that in the tissues, you don't have an active CDAT cell response that would be able to eliminate HIV infected cells in a direct cytotoxic manner. Instead, the COVID pandemic blew up. And, and so for the rest of the talk, I'm going to, to talk about what we did after our labs were shut down in March and, and what we've done with COVID since. And so, so the first thing that happened, of course, was that on March 20th, the week of March 20th, University of Pennsylvania shut down all labs and, and made everybody go home. And the only labs that were allowed to stay open were those that were conducting COVID related research. Naturally, because my lab is a human immunology lab, we immediately started collecting blood from, from COVID infected patients who were at the ICU at the hospital. And this was in collaboration with Nula Meyer, who is a physician at the University of Pennsylvania hospitals. And she was getting a lot of COVID-19 patients every day. So we were seeing two to five ICU patients every day, seven days a week. And, and we were processing these samples in real time and started analyzing these cells in real time. And this was really a heroic effort by two post docs in my lab, Latisha Curry-Cervantes and Bettina Pampena, as well as another post doc in John Wery's lab. This has since expanded out within both of our labs to involve more individuals. But at the beginning, it really started off with just three people processing all of this material. We bio banked all this material. We distributed it to Sarah Cherry's lab for virology studies, to Scott Hensley's lab for virology studies. And, and we, we just initiated many more studies on, on proteomics and so on. So on, on April 13th, this was all moving extremely fast. It was getting out of hand and my lab could not handle this many patient samples coming in every day. And we essentially realized that there were a lot of people sitting at home who weren't allowed to work because they weren't working in COVID related labs, but were very capable of doing this work if they had the right training. There was also a lot of empty labs and a lot of empty tissue culture rooms because those labs had been closed down. So, so John and I came to the decision that we're going to essentially commandeer these empty tissue culture rooms on an entire floor of, of one of the main research buildings. And we recruited students and post docs, anybody, technicians, anybody who was willing to come in and learn how to do this processing. And essentially we centralized the collection of the patient material from the hospital for, for all of these studies and essentially made one big team that, that was then providing samples for, for the subsequent research at Penn on COVID. This, this processing unit evolved into what is now John Wery's Immune Health Initiative in June. And it's continued now in a much more, almost industrial type of manner to, to collect samples from various studies, including COVID related studies on infection and vaccination and so on. So what did we do with all of this? First of all, we set up a very large immune profiling procedure where we again collected the samples, we bio banked them down. And then we had a wide array of different studies that we, that we did, including virology, cytometry, so on. Here's some of the players. Here's a picture of Nula Meyer, who is really one of the heroes of this whole story. And this is an old slide, we believe me have collected many, many, many more people than this. But we were collecting from the very start, healthy controls, people who had recovered early in the pandemic. And then ICU and non-ICU patients, pediatric COVID-19 patients through collaboration with, with CHOP, including Miss C designated children. And then cancer patients, rheumatology transplant for vaccine studies as well. So far, we've actually been, been very, very successful in our studies. Here's, here's five of the manuscripts that have resulted from the collaboration between John and I. These initial ones in Science and Science Immunology and then follow up papers with, with additional on vaccination now just came out in Science Immunology, virology paper by Scott Hensley in Cell and so on. So, so our initial studies were really just to characterize what was going on in severe COVID infection. And again, this was all published last year. But, but some of the, the striking things that we found here in the severely infected individuals, the severe ICU patients, we see this great elevation of neutrophils. At the same time, we see a low, a lower frequency of T cells and B cells. We see a big drop in CD8 mates cells. Basically across the board, we see neutrophil elevation and lymphocyte loss. We saw a number of different characteristics within lymphocytes as well. So one of the, the more striking things that we found was this, this pronounced decrease in CD16 expression by neutrophils as well as NK cells in the severe, severe patients compared to the mild and recovered in all cases. And, and CD15, both, both CD15 and CD16. So CD15 is involved in neutrophil activation and migration. CD16, of course, is FC gamma receptor. And this down modulation likely reflects a highly activated state in these cells. We were able to see a massive plasma blast elevation as shown here in the severe COVID cases. And sort of depending on the stage at which these patients were, were observed, we could see sometimes just truly massive responses. In this case, this is a non-leukemic donor where we found in, within the B cell pool, 95% of the B cells were plasma blasts. And these are, these levels meet or exceed what's been shown for dengue or yellow fever vaccinations by others. We also saw heightened T cell activation, but importantly, although we do see heightened T cell activation, it's quite heterogeneous. And so some individuals, and you can see the range here of activation. And this was highlighted even more so in John Wery's paper, where we find some individuals with clear evidence of T cell activation, others who had sort of a very low level. We were able to use all of the parameters that we assessed essentially to, to pull out the severely diseased individuals selectively from the recovered and the mild cases. And you can see all the different parameters that we were able to assess simultaneously, leading to this separation. John Wery's lab focused more on B and T cell analysis. We're also able to pull out based on B and T cell parameters, the severe infections selectively from the mild and recovered. And so essentially you can, you can just broadly characterize the state of these individuals simply by assessing their T cell responses and B cell responses. We looked at Miss C as well. And so, so what we're able to see, which has also been shown by others, is that there, Miss C is characterized by a very strong T cell activation. And what's interesting about this is it's very delayed from when the actual infection occurred. And actually, in most cases, the infection has been cleared by these individuals, yet they still have this prolonged T cell activation. We were also able to see presumably some, some type of evidence of, of a heightened CX3 CR1 positive C8 response in these Miss C cases. And this, this is fractal kind receptor, maybe associated with lymphocyte adherence to vessel walls, suggesting these CD8s may be in some ways somewhat pathogenic. Okay, running out of time here a little bit, so I'll just move through. We're also working with, with different vaccine studies. And this is really right now being driven largely by John's lab. And we, we're a small part in this. They've been working really to compare two groups of vaccinated individuals, people who were never infected with COVID and those, and those who, who actually were infected with COVID and, and vaccinating them to see what happens. And, and to make a long story short, basically you can see here in blue, the people who were COVID naive and in red, the people who had been previously infected with COVID. And not surprisingly, after vaccination compared to baseline, they, they all increased. But the, but, but because the, the previously infected individuals start off with a higher titer in the first place, they have an even stronger titer. But what's important to note here is even after the boosting occurs at later time points, essentially the previously infected individuals have such a high response, the boost doesn't really do a whole lot for them. Whereas the naive individuals really see a strong effect of this boost. And this is just recently published, sorry, in Science Immunology, there's a typo there. The memory B cell responses also increase in both groups, but again plateau in, in the, the previously infected individuals. And this is spike overall, spike RBD. The influenza specific cells don't budge at all, implying that this, this, it's clearly specific to the, to the COVID specific B cells. And then we've also been looking at T cells. And so, so this is a manuscript that, that's nearly submitted. It's getting ready, getting ready for submission. And, and shown here, we see CD4 responses going up in both groups. But again, really takes a little bit of time in both, but the, but the, essentially about the same level of responses after the boosting. Almost done, CDAT cells go up the same, but it's a little bit more heterogeneous than the CD4 responses. So, so basically to put it all together with vaccination, in previously infected individuals, the prime does most of the work, the boost doesn't do as much. T and B cells are detectable and so on. And this is a work of a lot of individuals. I don't have time to read through everything. The vaccination work has all been done primarily by John's lab. My lab has done, has done a lot of the, the pathogenesis work. And with that, I will stop and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for the invitation. My name is Galita Alter from the Reagan Institute of MGH MIT and Harvard. And I'm here to talk to you all about our work that we've been doing over the last year or so, applying system virology to define correlates of immunity to SARS-CoV-2. These are my disclosures. So everything for us began nearly 15 years ago, where we began to think about the mechanisms by which antibodies provide protection against infectious diseases. And so as vaccinologists were trained to think that a vaccine that's able to induce antibodies that are able to bind and block a virus from causing infection, otherwise known as neutralizing antibodies, that these types of antibodies are really the most important antibodies a vaccine can induce to confer protection from infection or disease. But what we've come to appreciate over the last two or three decades from work from Stanley Plotkin, Jeff Ravitch, Dennis Burton, Rafi Ahmed, and many other giants in the field, is that antibodies do so much more than just simply bind and block infection. And instead, antibodies, mostly the antibodies in our blood, are positioned to do very different things to temper and eliminate pathogens from the immune system. So beyond their ability to bind and block, antibodies really serve three critical functions. The first thing that these antibodies do is they bind and label infected cells or pathogens as being aberrant. So they act as essentially as biomarkers, essentially alert the immune system that an infection or some sort of disease is going on. The second thing these antibodies do is they act as molecular beacons that draw in immune cells close enough that they can form immunological synapses, essentially allowing the innate immune system to recognize that there's an infection going on. And finally, these antibodies provide highly specialized instructions to the immune system on how would you destroy anything to which those antibodies are bound. And those functions can range from cytokine secretion to phagocytosis, to NK cytotoxicity, to degranulation, to complement deposition. They can even load up antigen presenting cells like dendritic cells with antigens to prime or effective T cell immune responses. And even more recently from work from Leo James and others, you've learned that antibodies could even get inside of cells into the cytosol, where they can trigger intracellular FC receptors such as TRM21 and eliminate infection without affecting the viability of the actual infected cell. So given this remarkable diversity of functions that antibodies can elicit to essentially fight any particular pathogen or disease, we became fascinated over the last 15 years to try to develop tools that could agnostically profile all the different things that antibodies can do and to use these tools to accelerate our ability to identify humoral correlates of immunity against theoretically any potential disease of interest. So this is what gave birth this tool we call system virology. It was essentially a large number of highly paralyzed assays that allow us to interrogate the humoral immune response to pathogens at an unprecedented depth. The tool was originally developed to probe humoral immune responses in the plasma of infected or vaccinated humans. But over the last 15 years, we've adapted the tool to look at monoclonal antibodies as well as antibodies that evolve in different animal models, including non-human primates, as well as different rodent or rodent-like species. So we could really bridge and use this tool across lots of different potential immune correlates analysis to multiple different pathogens. Now, what we do is we take plasma or any kind of fluid that we can collect from our vaccinated or infected populations. And then we subject those antibodies to two different types of analyses. On the first side, we can look at the biophysical features of our pathogen specific antibodies. In the bottom half, we can look at the functional capability of those pathogen specific antibodies. So at a biophysical level, we can measure what the overall level is of different isotypes or subclasses of our pathogen specific antibodies to different antigens, to different variants of those antigens, or even to multiple epitopes present within our antigens of interest. This using a Luminex like technology, we can really look at 500 different specificities simultaneously. In parallel, we can ask if our pathogen specific antibodies interact with FC receptors that are the receptors involved in triggering innate immune function. And we can ask if the antibodies or pathogen bind to these receptors with different affinities. And we could also isolate the pathogen specific antibodies and ask if they are post-translationaly modified in any particular way, because we know that this change in glycosylation on the backend of antibodies is absolutely critical in tuning the functional capability of the antibodies with respect to different innate immune factor functions. In parallel, on a functional level, we ask for pathogen specific antibodies can fix complement, activate neutrophils, macrophages, monocytes, NK cells, eosinophils, dendritic cells, if they can load up antigen into germinal centers by binding to follicular dendritic cells, if they can activate non-immune cells like epithelial or endothelial cells, if they can activate adaptive immune cells like T cells and B cells, if they can trigger apoptosis, if they can drive enhancement, if they change immune complex dynamics and biology. We capture all this information using these paralyzed assays. And then we aggregate all this information and then perform typical machine learning analyses to look for patterns in the data that track with different clinical outcomes. And so just to give you an example of how rich this data is, I'm showing you an example over here of a flu specific response captured in 120 otherwise healthy individuals that work at the Reagan Institute. What I'm showing you here is every row represents a different individual we profiled. And every column represents a different feature of their flu specific response, including their ability to drive different kinds of functions, to drive different FCS receptor binding profiles, if they're glycoslated in different ways, if they are of a different isotope subclass distribution profile. And hopefully what you can see here is that there's no two individuals that are identical. Every line is unique. And that is likely dictated by when they were immunized for flu last, when they were last infected with the flu, probably based on the number of different vaccines they've seen over their lifetime, what infections they've had. Really, you know, as outbred populations, we all have our unique fingerprint or capability of interacting with this particular antigen of interest. And so hopefully you can see the richness of the data. But importantly, even though the data is so rich and so But importantly, even though the data is so rich and so heterogeneous, you can start to see some differences already by eye. The patterns already started to appear. We can see over here in the top right, there's a group of individuals that make hotter antibodies or redder profiles. And these represent flu specific antibodies are able to interact with FC receptors with higher affinities. Whereas down here, you have individuals that are colder within these particular antibody profile features. They make antibodies that are not able to bind as tightly to FC receptors. And so what this already shows us is that there's patterns of data. And these patterns become incredibly meaningful when we can link these particular data to different clinical outcomes and ask whether there are particular antibody features that track with different outcomes. And we can use that information to develop mechanistic insights into how antibodies might confer protection against a disease of interest. So what I'm going to show you now is how we apply this tool to begin to define correlates of immunity to SARS-CoV two. So where we began at the beginning of the pandemic, very early on in 2020, as we began to ask ourselves a very simple question, and that was whether or not we could define natural protective humoral immune responses that occurred in individuals that became infected and developed COVID nineteen. And to ask if those natural protective humoral profiles could help us understand how we can make better diagnostics to help to treat or care for patients, if it could help us think through how we could evaluate vaccines more effectively. And finally, if you can use this information to help inspire therapeutic design. And the story I'm going to tell you really began with the very first outbreak of SARS-CoV two in the United States. This was a small outbreak that occurred in Seattle in a long term care facility just outside of the downtown area where there was a SARS-CoV two infected individual that essentially spread the infection throughout this elderly care community based institution. Now, when the patients were brought to Harborview Hospital, which is University of Washington affiliate, the ID physician that was in charge at the time had the vision to begin to collect samples from all these individuals at the time of hospital admission. So all these individuals came in, they were about five to ten days from symptom onset, so very early on in their disease. And she collected the samples before the individuals went on to develop either more severe infection and pass away or ultimately to convalesce. And she sent us the samples and she asked us a very simple question, and that was whether or not there was any chance that we could develop, identify antibody profiles that could act as biomarkers that could essentially predict whether or not someone was going to go on to survive or not survive the disease. So we captured a lot of data from these individuals. And what I'm going to show you now is really what we learned from this very early analysis and how it really inspired how we began to think about how antibodies grab hold and ultimately clear this virus from the system. So where we began back in late February, early March was we began by profiling antibody responses to three dominant antigenic targets of antibodies. We focused in on the spike antigen, of course, because of its importance in attachment and fusion to the human epithelial cells. We also looked at responses to the RBD, which is this little knob on the top of the spike antigen, which is the dominant target for neutralizing antibodies. It's critically important for actual attachment to the ACE two receptor on the lung epithelial cells. And we also took responses to the nucleocapsid protein, which essentially coats the viral genome. We don't think of this as being an important antibody target, but it's highly abundant, very immunogenic. And we thought it was a nice control antigen to take a look at in the context of this early pandemic antibody profiling. And we profiled responses in these individuals that I mentioned before in a blinded way. We had no idea if people were going to go on to convalesce or pass away. And then later, we were unblinded. I'm going to show you these unblinded data now. So if you look at just total IDG one levels, this is the bulk antibody in our peripheral circulation. If you look at IDG one levels across spike RBD or nucleocapsid across individuals here in the blue that ultimately survived the disease or individuals that went on to pass away in the brown. Hopefully, what you can see here is we didn't really find any differences in the overall level of antibodies induced to each of these targets in this particular in across these two populations. And so what this told us is that individuals who pass away are not failing to induce a humoral immune response. In fact, they make great antibody responses to the virus. So tighter alone is not a predictor of whether or not someone is going to go on to survive or not survive the disease. So the question we asked ourselves next is if we take the whole dataset that we analyze, including the ability of these antibodies to bind to FC receptors, to trigger different functions, to essentially be generated as different isotypes or subclasses, could we find an aggregate or a deeper humoral profile that could somehow predict early on in disease that these individuals were mounting different humoral immune responses that could somehow control or clear the pathogen with different efficacies? So we took all this data and we performed a typical machine learning analysis. What I'm showing you here is a cluster analysis on the left side. Every dot represents an individual that we profiled in this particular cohort. In the blue are the individuals who survived the disease. In the brown are the individuals who went on to pass away. Again, all these profiles were generated five to ten days from symptom onset. And hopefully, what you can see here very clearly is by using our composite system serology dataset, we could completely resolve individuals into those that were going to go on to survive versus those that went on to pass away, simply by looking at this qualitative difference in the antibody response that they generated to SARS-CoV two. So this told us that titers IDG one levels to the antigens was not predictive, but the overall profile was highly predictive of what disease trajectory people were going to undergo later on in disease. Now, interestingly, of the hundred and twenty different features that we analyze in the humoral immune response that we captured in these individuals, only five of the total hundred and twenty features was all we needed to completely resolve these two groups of individuals from one another. And these five features are listed over here in this variable importance plot where the features that are listed on the top are more different across the groups compared to the feature on the bottom, but all were critical for building this model that could essentially discriminate between the two groups. Two of the features were enriched in individuals who went on to convalesce here in the blue lines. And three of the features were enriched individuals who went on to pass away. And what's interesting about the features is if you just look at what they're targeting, the two blue features were to the spike antigen, so S is good. And the three features that are enriched, the people who went on to pass away, were all directed to the nucleocapsid antigen. And interestingly, IgG one titers were not part of the signature, but instead, the selection of IGMs or IGAs that are our acute mucosal immune response of the pathogen were highly enriched to either spike in the protected or to nucleocapsid in the non-protected, and that was really quite different across the two groups. In addition, I just want to mention that the top feature that was enriched in individuals who did not survive the disease was nucleocapsid specific antibody dependent complement deposition. Interestingly, complement has been implicated as a potential pathological trigger of lung damage and potential acceleration or aggravation of ARDS. And so what was really fascinating to see is that very early on, these individuals were somehow picking different antigens to essentially direct their immune responses to. And potentially by targeting spike, maybe the survivors are able to attack the right antigen that can essentially grab and clear the virus from the lung tissue. Whereas these other individuals that go on to pass away are making responses to not so highly protective antigens. This nucleocapsid protein may be making immune complexes that are highly inflammatory, causing complement deposition and ultimate dumb damage in the lung. But to give you an idea of how we began to think about these data at a mechanistic level, thinking, well, why are they picking such different features? And why are the spike responses actually helping the survivors? I want to show you how we analyze data in a slightly different way. So what I'm showing you here is the same data, now just looking at it in a slightly different profile. And so what we're looking at over here are radar plots of the antibody data that I just showed in the last slide. On the top here are two radar plots from the individuals who go on to pass away. And down here are the radar plots of the antibody data we collected for the individuals who go on to survive the disease, the convalescence. The plots in the middle are to the nucleocapsid protein and the plots on the left are to the spike antigen. And every leaf here in the radar plot represents a different antibody metric that we analyzed. In the bluish purples are the different subclasses and isotypes of antibodies. And in the yellowy oranges are the different functions that these antigen specific antibodies can trigger, including the ability to trigger NK cell functions, complement deposition, neutrophil phagocytosis or monocyte phagocytosis. And the size of that radar plot leaf is essentially the magnitude of the response in that particular group of individuals to that antigen. So let's focus it on the nucleocapsid specific response and take a look at how different it looks in the people who go on to pass away versus those who survive. And hopefully, right away, you can see very clearly, the people who end up passing away have much bigger responses to the nucleocapsid protein than individuals that go on to survive the disease. So clearly, early on, individuals who are ultimately not surviving the disease are picking to elicit very strong responses to this internal antigen that is not necessarily a critical target for antibody immune protection. Conversely, if we look at the spike specific response, hopefully you can see here that in general, the response is bigger in the individuals who go on to survive the disease compared to those who do not survive the disease, particularly in the levels of IgGs, Ig's and IgMs that these individuals elicit. But interestingly, beyond just this overall increase in the spike specific response in these individuals, I want you to note the differences in the functions that these groups of individuals confer to their spike specific antibodies. Where individuals who go on to pass away make spike specific antibodies that are able to trigger NK cell functions quite effectively. So these are sort of toxic functions. Whereas individuals who go on to survive the disease tend to make antibodies that are highly effective in recruiting complement, neutrophil phagocytosis and monocyte phagocytosis. So what we're seeing are two things. The first thing is, is that early on in infection, for reasons that are not completely clear, people who go on to pass away choose to make dominant responses to nucleocapsid and survivors make responses to the spike antigen. Conversely, if you also look at how they make these antibodies, these survivors end up making antibodies that are also able to drive more effective opsino-phagocytic clearance of the virus, much more rapid elimination, and potentially this allows them to survive the disease. So really interesting observations that got us thinking, well, how are they making these more effective spike specific responses? And can we learn about this by looking at additional cohorts that can look earlier in the course of disease and look at the evolution of these responses over time to get a feeling for how they are able to control their virus more effectively or more aggressively? So we turned our attention to a second cohort that we collected through the Massachusetts General Hospital. This was a cohort of individuals that either went on to survive in the yellow or ultimately went on to pass away. But these individuals that we began to follow were caught from the day of symptom onset and they were followed over the first two weeks of infection. And hopefully, what you can see here, just by looking at the overall spike specific antibody response, is that from the day of symptom onset, these individuals have higher levels of IgGs to the spike antigen. So right away, they're making these stronger, more robust response of the spike antigen that really take time for the non-survivors to evolve. So there's some early kinetic advantage that the survivors have. The question is why and where are those antibodies coming from? So to get a feeling for what was special about those antibodies, we took a look at the overall data that we collected from this cohort. So what I'm showing you over here is the overall cohort of all the different antigens and all the different readouts that we measured for our survivors in the yellow versus our non-survivors in the red. And not to make you squint too much, what we're going to look at is a few of these particular metrics in a little bit more granular detail. So what I'm showing you over here now is the spike specific IgG one levels, I should say, the IgG one levels to the spike antigen, nucleocapsid receptor binding domain, to the S one, which is the cap on the spike in here in the green, or to the stem, which is the S two shown on the right side, which is the bottom part of the spike antigen. And hopefully, what you can see here is that the IgGs to spike come up very early. They're already present from the day of symptom onset. Nucleocapsid are not different across the two groups. The RBD specific response is not different. The S one cap is not different. But the S two, the stock specific response is certainly present from the day of symptom onset. And it is there and very steady over the course of the first two weeks in the survivors. And it takes time for the non-survivors to evolve these potentially. This delayed kinetics gives them a disadvantage in controlling and clearing the virus. But interestingly, we took a look at more than just the titers. We also looked at the ability of these antibodies, each of these targets, to bind to different FC receptors that are involved in triggering antibody factor functions, including the ability to bind to the inhibitory FC gamma R two B receptor involved in phagocytosis, the cytotoxicity inducing activating FC receptor gamma R three A that's present on in K cells, as well as the phagocytic FC gamma R three B receptor involved in neutrophil phagocytosis. And hopefully, what becomes very clear is the yellow line, the survivors are always able to mount stronger and faster responses to each of these targets. It doesn't matter which one we look at for all of these different antigen specificities. But the one thing that is very different is that this stock S two specific response is always present much earlier in disease and evolves much faster in the survivors and the non-survivors. So the question became is why is S two special? Why is it present from the day of symptom onset? And where do these responses come from and are they conferring protective immunity? So if we took a look at the glycoprotein amino acid sequence for the spike protein over here, there's something very interesting to note here across the S one and S two domains of the actual glycoprotein antigen. So if we compare conservation at an amino acid level across forty four bat coronaviruses compared to SARS-CoV two across these two different domains of the spike antigen, where the taller the green line, the more conserved an amino acid is. Hopefully, what you can see here is over here on the S one side on the left, there's lower levels of conservation, so more white gaps in the S one domain. But a whole lot of conservation on this stock or S two domain of the SARS-CoV two S two spike component. And so what this got us thinking is that maybe the reason these S two responses are coming up so early and the reason they're giving these survivors an advantage is because they might be drawing on previous immunity that was present in these individuals to cross or other common coronaviruses that gives them an advantage in responding and developing more functional, more effective immunity against the virus. So to test that hypothesis, what we did is to basically go into a third cohort of longitudinally tracked individuals, this time focusing in on a group of individuals. They were caught in the emergency room at the time of symptom onset. And what we did is we profiled their humoral immune responses. And we asked if we profiled the response to the nucleocapsid antigen in the pink, receptor binding domain in the brown, the spike domain in the green, the S one in the blue, or the S two in this fuchsia color, can we see differences in which profiles are most predictive of either survivor survival in the yellow compared to deceased or of developing moderate disease compared to passing away? And hopefully, what you can see in these volcano plots is the majority of the antibody features were always enriched earlier on in individuals who survive or who develop moderate disease. And what was fascinating was that the features that was most highly predictive of survival and of developing moderate disease were always related to S two specific immune responses. So S two is critical. And the question was, is where are these S two responses coming from? So what we've come to appreciate over the last year or so, since the appearance of this novel coronavirus is that we've actually seen multiple coronaviruses transfer or transit into humans over the last thousand years, where there are common causing coronaviruses, NL sixty three, that came in over a thousand probably years ago. And then others have come in more recently, like SARS in two thousand and three and MERS in two thousand and twelve. But other common causing, common cold causing coronaviruses like two two nine E, OC forty three and HKU one probably came in over the last two hundred years and constantly circulate in our populations. And what's interesting is if you look at all these different coronaviruses, both that are present in the bats as well as have come transferred into that have zoonotically transited into humans, what we see is that there are multiple different families of these coronaviruses. SARS-CoV two lives in the beta coronavirus family. And interestingly, there are multiple additional beta coronaviruses that circulate in the human population. And we began to ask ourselves, can we look at another common coronavirus that's within this beta coronavirus family and begin to ask the question of whether preexisting immunity to something like OC forty three, which is relatively distant from SARS-CoV two, but still in the same family and shares a tremendous amount of homology with the S two domain, whether or not OC forty three specific responses could somehow predict whether or not someone was going to go on and survive infection more effectively? So we profiled OC forty three responses. We threw them in with all the SARS-CoV two antibody metrics that we captured. And we asked the question of whether or not OC forty three specific responses were also enriched either individuals who survived the disease compared to people who pass away in individuals who develop moderate infection versus those who have severe disease or develop moderate infection and don't pass away. And hopefully, what you can see here is at the top of all of these antibody profiles, OC forty three specific IGMs or IgGs are always enriched in survivors. And interestingly, more highly enriched in individuals who go on to develop more moderate disease. So this got us really excited and got us thinking, well, maybe it really is that these common coronavirus specific responses might be enriched in these individuals that deal with SARS-CoV two more effectively. The question is, how can we actually begin to understand how they give rise or might allow this more rapid evolution of SARS-CoV two specific immunity? So to address that question, what we elected to do was to essentially go and look at the relationship of the evolving SARS-CoV two specific response. of the evolving SARS-CoV-2-specific response to the pre-existing OC43-specific antibody response in the same individuals. And so what we were looking for is whether or not any of these SARS-CoV-2-specific features that we analyzed were related at that very early window of time, in the first zero to three days, to that early OC43-specific response. And wherever you see brown dots, that shows a positive correlation between SARS-CoV-2 responses and OC43. And hopefully, what you can see here in the people who ultimately go on to pass away in this emergency room cohort, is that there's a few relationships. So maybe these guys are drawing on these original OC43-specific responses that allows them to make some potential SARS-CoV-2-specific immunity. But if we look at the individuals who go on to survive severe disease, these individuals are drawing on this OC43 immunity even more robustly, really functionalizing and generating a much more robust SARS-CoV-2-specific response very early on in infection. And even more interestingly, if you look at the individuals who develop moderate disease, these individuals are really leveraging their OC43-specific immune response during that first three days following symptom onset, really generating SARS-CoV-2 responses that are highly associated with those pre-existing OC43 responses, really showing us that, you know, survival is associated and moderate disease is associated with this leveraging of pre-existing common coronavirus immunity. But what was even more exciting is we began to look at individuals outside of the hospital. We began to look at individuals in a community-based serosurveillance study of more asymptomatic or postsymptomatic infection. And so in this particular population, we were able to study individuals over time before they acquired SARS-CoV-2 infection. We could analyze their response in the green prior to infection and then after infection. And we asked whether or not these individuals had OC43-specific immunity. IgM responses were not really different across the two groups, prior or after infection, individuals with different numbers of symptoms, so zero symptoms, one symptom, two symptoms. IgA responses were pretty equivalent, although everybody had IgA responses to OC43. Everyone had high levels of IDG1 responses to OC43 prior to infection. But interestingly, after infection, all these individuals mounted stronger OC43 responses selectively in individuals who developed fewer symptoms. So these individuals were really leveraging this pre-existing immunity and even more profoundly in people who had no symptoms. They leveraged their OC43-specific response more effectively than individuals who had one or two symptoms. But even more interesting is this common coronavirus response. We began to also look at the SARS-CoV-2 response in these individuals, looking across multiple different antibody metrics. And what we found was really quite interesting when we looked at the response to the RBD, to the spike, to the S1 in the blue, or to the S2 domain. If we just pay attention first to the left and look at the IgM, IgA, IDG1, IDG3 response, we see relatively similar profiles across people with zero symptoms, one symptom, two symptoms for most of these features. Although we begin to see, at least for the IDG1 response, that they do mount stronger responses to the S2 domain, particularly in individuals who have fewer, with the number of symptoms they encounter, they leverage these responses more effectively than the other particular specificities. Interestingly, for IDG3 as well, the S2 is the dominant target for all three of the populations that develop zero, one, or two symptoms. But what was striking to me was when we looked at the functional capability of these antibodies with respect to their ability to recruit different FC receptors, such as the phagocytic FCR2A or cytotoxic SC gamma R3 receptor. Where you can see in the individuals who have no symptoms, they only make S2-specific responses that can interact with these FC receptors. They don't even bother to leverage antibodies to other targets, likely because this S2 response is sufficient to completely control and clear the infection. And the same thing, we see this gradually with two symptoms, these individuals, or sorry, with one symptom, the individuals still really rely heavily on these S2-functional immune responses. But then as we get to higher numbers of symptoms, they begin to generate antibodies to multiple different targets. So hopefully, what I can leave you with is this really interesting observation that we were really surprised by. But that was that early on, you can see that SARS-CoV-2-specific antibody profiles can predict disease outcome. And it really depends on what particular targets in the virus they essentially generate antibodies against. Interestingly, they all generate functional antibodies, but it's really these spike-specific responses that are key to predicting survival from infection. But even more interestingly, by looking at longitudinal humoral evolutionary patterns, we begin to see that it's specifically these S2-specific responses that might be leveraged out of pre-existing common coronavirus immunity that essentially with the right functions are able to potentially grab the virus very effectively very early on, containing the virus and potentially providing that early convalescent activity that is required to vanquish the virus completely. And we truly believe this S2-specific functional activity may be absolutely key to protective immunity, both in natural infection as well as potentially following vaccination. So with that, I want to just thank the people who did this work. This was done by an incredible team of graduate students and post-docs in the lab that, you know, really worked tirelessly throughout the pandemic, doing really phenomenal work. Our computational collaborators, Tomer, Carolyn, and Doug over at MIT that really helped us see the patterns of data that we were just so excited about. Collaborators have provided proteins and other support. Our clinical collaborators, Dan, a good friend who we worked with very closely, as well as our collaborators in the vaccine development space. And I thank you for your attention.